Okay, so we will call the September meeting of the Northborough Planning Commission order. Everyone in the planning commission and in the audience has the agenda. For the record, it's about 7:10 that we're beginning and all planning commission members are present at the conference. And we have two guests in the audience tonight. And Michael Darkovich and Montgomery County Planning Commission. So Jim, what happens here? Sometimes when my email comes on, it comes over the screen, so I'll just have to turn it off. Okay, so let's get started. Tonight's agenda, we have one subdivision and land development presentation. 650 Montgomery Avenue. Is Kevin Walsh on the Zoom tonight? Kevin, are you there? He said he would be joining us.
He is not.
He's not. Do you know if he'll be joining us, Michelle? He said he would.
Yes, he will be joining.
Okay. And we will have further discussion of infill, our infill housing proposals that we would like to make to Borough Council. Those are the only items on our agenda. Now, Michelle, do you know when he'll be joining? Do you know anything about why he's not on right now?
I do not, but any moment.
Okay. As soon as Kevin joins, we'll get to your item. I'd like Kevin to be able to hear your presentation.
Just to the board to where Kevin was provided with these images as well as a more subtle technical plan. So he is.
Yeah, okay, that's good. That's good. I still think it'd be better for him to hear the whole.
Absolutely.
So we'll start with the chairs update. The Kevin is joined, so we will. What I'd like to do is ask the planning commission if we could table Agenda Item 1 announcements updates, which include the chairs update, Montgomery County Planning Commission update, and one announcement that I have, so that we can jump right into the 650 Montgomery Avenue presentation. All favors that. Okay, so we will table that item until after this presentation. So we welcome back Axiom Partners, Adam Rosenzweig, to update us on 650 Montgomery Avenue. My understanding is this is an informational presentation today. We're not seeking any action, nor do we, I think, are we clear exactly what action might be needed.
So what is protocol in today's environment with standing exhibits approaching?
Can I just talk about that?
Yes.
So our camera is this white thing right here. It's also the microphone.
Okay.
And you should be within about 10 or 11 feet of it. And when you talk, it will recognize you, it will turn toward you as you're speaking. If the camera doesn't turn toward you, it's sort of an indication that you're not speaking loud enough.
Nobody has ever told me that I have to speak.
Okay. So I guess if you stand kind of, I'm sorry, I forget your name.
Herb.
Herb is.
You sit up here and.
That would be the perfect place, Jim.
Sure.
Is this here? Does this work for everybody? So thank you, everybody, is.
It needs to be higher, Adam. I'm sorry.
Oh, so.
There you go.
We can use that easily. There it is in the corner.
Mike, can you give a hand please? Thank you.
It is nice to see everybody in person again. I hope everybody is well and their families are well.
Thank you.
This is not your first in person.
Yeah. It started like in June when the air conditioning really wasn't.
That's ideal. So this is, thanks Todd mentioned, this is an informational meeting. We have gone through the process with the planning commission and the Borough Council and did receive plan approval actually dating back to November of 2020. We have recorded that plan with Montgomery County. And the process of COVID has sort of just waited with everybody else to see what's out there. The presentation tonight is to look through the plan to make a modification to the approved plan related to the exterior of buildings, specifically the frontage on Meeting House Lane in particular. If you recall, we worked with the Borough, the Planning Council, Planning Commission last time. We did receive a special exception for this retaining wall as the height of the wall and the railing were above the allowable height or code. We have since found that we believe it helps our leasing effort here, because right now we, like I said, with COVID, to modify the front, and this was also some of the concerns that were brought up before, to actually eliminate 75% of that retaining wall and drop it down to grade. So what you see here, this is a technical plan. I'm going to show you some images in a minute. I know it's hard to see. But basically, from before, we showed a wall on Montgomery Avenue, heart corner, wrapping all the way down to the entry drive on Meeting House Lane with what we called the grand staircase and an ADA lift, and it was open fully around to the public. What we've done essentially is cut the wall right at the staircase coming off the intersection and then flatten the sidewalk to be at grade at a finish level, a technical 303, which will allow for at-grade outdoor terrace or at-grade patio, I guess we would call it, along the front issue. So let's.
We'll start with this one and then.
This one?
Sure. So we have, we have some cleaner elevations, but this gives you an idea of the breadth and width of the retaining wall as was previously proposed and what we're proposing now. As Adam said, previously, this wall continued all along Meeting House and retained about to right the end of the building there. We had implemented sort of a grand staircase to be a pedestrian access, but also to be sort of a gathering space, you know, an area that we felt could be activated by visitors to the building. So the new proposed plan basically pulls all of that out. There would still be some, you know, obviously planting beds that go.
Yeah, let's talk one thing about that. The planning beds basically were taken as they were before, which were up high, and they were just dropped down low.
Right.
So there's really no change, and we will demonstrate that as needed, but no change to the landscaping plan or the furries cover at all.
Correct, yes. So we'll still have a set of stairs that go up here. On this end, you have zero access point now. So from the sidewalk onto the patio, you walk right on. It's a little more, we feel it's a little more inviting, a little more activated for pedestrian use. As you get along this way and you get closer to the building, we're slowly ramping up the sidewalk. So we're eliminating the need for the ADA lift, which is, you know, not ideal. So having the sidewalk gradually go up at a 2% slope meets all the ADA requirements and it addresses the grade change in a way that we feel we can hide it with things, landscaping, and still make it a usable space. So just quickly, I don't know if you can see this, but the sort of red dashed area again is all sort of representing the mass of retaining wall that we're basically proposing to eliminate now. And this is a cleaner image that basically shows.
Do you want to pass it around to the table, that way everybody's.
So did the floor elevation drop too?
So what we did is the main elevation of the building remains at 309. And what we did is create a split level entrance down below to a basement level.
Which is here.
Which is there, which is at 303. So you sort of walk in at a half level down below, and then there'll be a basement and then there'll be another set of means. By the way, inside, there will be means to get up and down, both via stairs and elevator. So there will be access to come through.
Okay, can you remind me, is there some grade parking here?
There is none.
So why 309, Mr. Carey?
So the property has a, I think it's an 11-foot grade difference from one corner to the other. So where we are here is literally, I think, at 299, and on the back corners at 311. So we tried to pick a place that was sort of in the middle to get to a finished floor level all the way across.
And to maintain a continuous floor plan throughout the building.
So there are stairs down from Meeting House Lane to this level?
Yeah, so the sidewalk here slows down, and so we have three entry points along the sidewalk.
Here's another view. It's a different view quarter, but.
So there's a series of steps that go down, about three steps down here. In the middle, there's about two. And then here, it's a fully straight on, it's like zero transition.
Okay, so this retaining wall looks just tall.
So this is the word, that's what I'm talking about, so the stairs that we showed there and there, we've just flipped them. They go that way right up to the patio, which still wraps around and still has what we had.
And that's the height of the other stuff right in the parking lot.
That's correct. So that's the way you see it here, so it comes up. It's the same part here. And this is the other schedule.
Standing where we said, apparently all the way across.
To extend the building.
Transitions down. Still made a sidewalk connection here and there.
And then beyond this, you can sort of start to see this one in the middle here.
Sidewalk ramping up, walk behind the, behind the, you know, landscaping against the wall. So there's.
I think, what I'm going to try to do, Adam, is show you what's on the screen. The digital file, is that what I said?
It's so much better.
Here, here, the sidewalk, this is about three steps down, it's about two steps. When we get to here, we're on what we're.
I'd like to do it one time.
It's awful, but COVID had to help make this happen.
To Adam's point, you come in this, so here's the landing. You go down a couple of steps to get into the lower level, or you go up the steps. And there's also a great, fully ADA compliant left within the building. We pulled that down into the space rather than having that.
You have it up there now?
Well, Michelle put it up.
Oh, good.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. So to make, since people may be watching.
Yep.
If you could sort of address the microphone, their comments, so that, and we do have the drawings up on the screen and we can switch between different drawings that you submitted. Just the Borough Assistant Manager is doing that remotely. So if there's another drawing you want to show, just ask her. Because what I'd like is to have on the screen, which the public is watching, if they're.
Yes.
The same thing that you're showing us, and I'd like the public to have the benefit of what you're telling us.
Of course. Fair enough.
I appreciate your coming to watch us.
So would you like us to go through it again for the public benefit?
No, that's okay. I think, I think, I think we were kind of in the mode of having planning commissioners ask questions. So let's just continue in that mode. We'll just, Adam, do you have any further questions? We could just kind of go around to this point.
Maybe get four, but.
About your day, if you have any further questions.
Yeah, could you just speak a little bit more to how you got to this change? You know, your analysis of the market and what profit is?
Well, the analysis of the market, to be very, very blunt, is from a retail perspective, is zero. Right, for COVID, for small shop, for boutiquey, is zero. And a lot of the complaints were, it's great, it's good visibility, but it's all over your access. And even though you have parking, it sits back. And we, some of the people you were talking to have asked for a better frontage position. And Meeting House, I know as we talked about, it's at grade. We put the retaining wall on to try to meet the initial flat floor elevation. Like you said, sometimes you sit back and stop, and you rethink things, and the conversation led us to this.
Do you have a tenant for this?
We are talking to a tenant or two. I am under an NDA, which I can't talk more about. We do not have a deal with them on paper at all. It's sort of conceptual. It's trying to accommodate a deed for them. And even if it doesn't, it's still, we think, for them, it's still a better plan.
I'm not surprised to hear you say that. The interior exposure was going to be deadly.
Very tough, very tough.
Absolutely.
You know, it's interesting, we looked at it from, from the retail, heart corner, sits up, good elevation. But then when you look, I mean, the building is nice, but in today's environment, it's a challenge. It's just a straight challenge.
When I see that, it reminds me of Whole Foods.
Oh, right. By the way, that's right, very similar to that concept.
So I can see that kind of, that kind of idea mirrored here.
Yeah.
I presume you do too.
Well, well, from a layout perspective, 100%, where you walk in and they have a main entrance, then you, they have, what is that, they have the things, streets, Winwood? You walk in Winwood, it's like a half wall, a hatch, and then further down. We are not talking to Whole Foods. This is not Whole Foods.
No, but the concept is similar, potentially similar.
Maybe.
Seems to have been popular.
Maybe. We'll see.
Jim, do you have any question?
No, not this time, I don't.
It's hard to say, because we went through. I have a question based on what we talked about.
You mentioned the slow-bow sidewalk is a little steeper than it was before. Does it rise above the street level in a different relationship? And so what's the maximum differential between the sidewalk and the street level?
So the sidewalk level hasn't changed. Sorry, maybe I was, the sidewalk level going along Meeting House is, we're maintaining that. We're introducing a secondary sidewalk onsite to get from the lower patio here up to the higher elevation.
I see, I misunderstood.
Yep.
So, and also, just to be clear, we submitted to Kevin, I know he's on the list, I don't know if he's, probably not had a chance to review yet, but literally, the building footprint does not change. The infurbius coverage does not change. If anything, we might pick up a 10th of 1% of actually pervious by doing this.
Yeah, we're essentially taking the patio and just compressing it down onto the grade, onto grade level.
At the conclusion of the meeting, you guys, I just want to field my general, not concerns, but just thoughts on the project in terms of what I'll have to re-review. I'm happy to do so, but I'll let you guys get through that first.
Great, thanks.
Thanks, Kevin. We will, we'll definitely want to hear your assessment as well.
So a couple of things we talked about in the previous round, I assume apply here because you're going to have to have a way to get the garbage out. And that was, I remember that was in, one of the things we really didn't like about it, that you were using that upper-level terrace as an accessway for trash. How are you handling that now?
So right now, that's a good question. Trash is still in the same place?
So there's a trash collection for the residential units above. It's on, it's actually on the backside, farther down, adjacent to the loading. The trash storage for the tenant space would be inside the tenant space, seeing as this is, you know, one, two, three smaller, you know, tenants that are not seven or eight tenants. The idea is that the trash room would be accessed, you know, within the building rather than going out of the patio. So I think that's, all in all, that's a big win for everybody.
And then, so with the terrace being lower, where are you going into the building actually? Because, so the floor level is up higher now, I assume.
So. I apologize, we had a cut sheet and I forgot.
A section?
I did a section cut that was a three-dimensional, but.
Did you submit it?
No, because it's, it wasn't really.
Finished, yeah.
Yeah.
But generally speaking, the first floor level is still here at 309.
Okay.
All the way across. In this area, you have a lower level that you would access from the patio here. This would basically be double-height glass, so when you walk in.
So that is a door going.
Yes, right there. There would be access from Meeting House. You would walk into a glassed view with double-height space, what looks like a mezzanine. It's not a mezzanine, it's a floor, but what looks like a mezzanine. And you would either go down a few steps to the lower level or up a few steps to the main floor.
So is it possible for a food service or a restaurant business to have their space right on that ground level? And then be able to serve people out of tables out there?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. And again, the thinking is that, you know, that patio was always, the hope was always that this would be activated space and then.
And this will still be a completely public space.
Right.
Right, this is not shut off.
So we even, you know, show some seating groups here, the thinking being that that would be populated in the summertime.
And one of the other things we did too, because we had spoken about it before, we previously shown bicycle, I'm looking at the back of it, we previously shown bicycle racks. I'm looking at the flat plan here, in the back for the front doors, which were the front doors. We still kept, I don't know how many we kept here. We added a whole nother set of racks down on the street level here. So people that want to come can just literally not have to bike all the way around, walk all the way back. So we added a whole nother set of racks here for bicycles.
Are you, do you have any other questions?
No.
What, how is the facade now on the parking lot side treated? Is that now effectively their rear, or is that also accessible in the front?
There would be access to multiple tenants back there as well. There would still be access. It would basically be, depending on how it ends up, you know, for this end, dual entrance. And then for the other end, where there's no basement space or Montgomery Avenue, there would just be access on the back.
So it's like, would be the elevation, those elevations from a design standpoint, would you maintain it?
We don't have a rendering of that here because it didn't change. It might change slightly from the fact of, let me just point out while we're talking, we did make one other change here. By lowering this wall, which we think actually also makes for better truck and loading of trash, we made, we were able to pick up three feet there because we're now great. Before, we had stairs for people to go up and down, trash and around. By eliminating that, by putting it inside, we were able to pick up three feet and make two load in there. So trucks aren't parked on the, you know, trash or delivery aren't parked or have problems access for both.
Right.
Any other questions?
And that's, that's the facade facing towards the town south, exactly?
That is correct. I mean, this is what was, this is exactly what was there before, except before, literally, it was a staircase right here. And this door was a one and a half as opposed to a single. So what we did is we took it from a one and a half to two singles.
What elevation is the inside of it, over there? And what's the floor height there?
There's two different ones.
So the floor height for these guys is at 306, and then there's a three-foot dock leveler hangar. And then this is the residential trash of the front zoo, that's up at 309.
So the floor's at 309, you have a dock to pull up to?
Correct. Yep.
Any other questions?
You know, I have, and I apologize, I wasn't here for the first presentation, but do you have like existing proposed plans that show what's there now and what you're, like a plan? Like a plan view?
The Albrechts.
Of the Albrechts?
Okay, so.
This is, this is literally where the Green House stands today.
Okay.
Not anymore.
Yeah.
Green House is gone.
What's up?
Stood, just.
Where it did stand. So it was demolished, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're not computing.
You didn't send somebody over there?
Hang on, let's finish with your question. So this is a previously approved project, which is going to be built on the site of the former Albrechts building.
Yeah.
So, but they may not have it today. Back when we looked at this earlier, we did, you know, we were able to compare it. It was particularly important because we were looking at the height of that podium where that is and the way it's set back with the street, the slopes between the building and the street. We looked at all of that in this, this project that you're seeing here, was the modification of that result.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm trying to get to what, what is the material of this building?
So that's a, that's a great question, a very good segue. So we.
Starting with what's there now.
Totally understand that. We, I love when you say your first presentation, I think we had probably more than one. But no, we actually did bring materials in to share with the planning commission. What we had proposed was a combination of brick, stone, and.
And fiber cement panels up on the residential level. There was some stucco on the backside on the parking lot side. But generally speaking, the retail base was brick and stone, cast stone, soap. And then fiber cement and metal panel on the residential above. What we've, what we've kind of transitioned to is making this building all brick. So we felt like, you know, we heard from the neighborhood that, you know, fiber cement is obviously not an inadequate material, but certainly in comparison to brick. It's not as long-lasting maintenance-wise, it's not as traditional. And so we, we agreed with that assessment, and so now we're proposing all brick.
Oh, mostly all brick. Mostly brick. There will still be some stone.
Yeah.
But the, the large main structure of the building.
The composite panels no longer are part of the project.
Yeah, I mean, because this building has a lot of mass. And for what you're proposing, you know, you want to invite like a scaled approach, something approachable. And so, you know, how that's articulated in the materials that you build with will be important.
Absolutely. And you know, one of the things that we felt was pretty important right from the get-go was the decision to pull the residential portion of the building back so that the facade, as experienced by the pedestrian, really is story and a half and not three stories. And so, you know, that, that massing exercise that we did, I think, helped guide the process to get to where we are now.
I had another question. When you, when you are able to secure a commitment from a tenant, do you expect, or do you anticipate that you might need to request changes in parking, circulation, or signage?
If at all, it might even be your reduction in parking, it would not be for a vision.
How many, how many retail spaces do you envision at this point, except for.
Initially, we were proposing six or seven. It would be less than that.
Approximately?
I don't know yet. Approximately anywhere from one to three, my guess.
So if there were one, what do you see as the main entrance now? Or two?
Well, this space that we're looking at here would have in mind this particular tenant occupying this portion of the building. So that tenant would have two entrances, both along Meeting House and one on the interior.
Through the building?
Yes, where we showed all seven entrances previously.
On the other side, you mean?
Yes. So just, I don't believe you were.
No, I'm new, that's why.
Sure, no problem. So a couple of things. The code required entrances facing the secondary street. And I apologize, Todd, I'm not using proper terminology. But we were required to have storefronts facing Meeting House. And we looked at this as an opportunity for signage and for storefront to comply. But the reality is, we looked at it as people are going to come by car, and those that come by foot, for them to come by foot, there would be a big staircase to walk up, and they would just walk around anyway. So that was the idea, the emphasis. So they were basically dual storefronts, and basically, everybody we spoke with, the prospective tenants, with the exception of a few restaurants, really did not like that. And the restaurants only liked it because, and they still do, because they can have outdoor access to the seating, which was the idea to activate that elevated terrace.
So I'm new, I mean, I, I really want my project to succeed and make a lot of money and be successful. So, and that's where, uh, you know, add a lot of value to the community and be an asset for generations to come, right? Um, you know, just as one comment, like a number of years ago, I attended this really fantastic lecture by a developer. He's Mark Falcone is his name and he has a big company out west. And he said that it was a family business, he had, you know, entered into it. He had, he analyzed his family's properties, the on the left shopping center and things. And he found consistently that the data pointed out that the value over time was so much stronger when the property was about walkability to the residential context. That it was actually the walk-up trade that kept the retail space at a premium rent and tenanted. And it was the car dependent retail that would just fail time after time and you have to redevelop and redevelop and redo the space. Um, it, it was, you know, and he basically was like, that's why he took the whole company in the direction of essentially the type of development that you're trying to do here. So in that vein, I just, you know, the, the plaza increased like a total improvement, I guess, compared to the concept before, which was this wall. I, I think that you would add even more value to, especially with the, with the sort of pivot that COVID is causing towards, um, thinking that way about indoor and outdoor and plazas and activation and, and, um, and the foot traffic. Because, uh, I think that's what's gonna, and not even just for the first tenant, but even like for the tenants that might follow that tenant 20 years from now. Um, I mean, I'm sort of surprised at the sort of leveling of the site on one plane. I mean, I get it, but I think that the, the trade off of getting all those walls and losing, like you have a four sided building here and that's very challenging to pull off, right?
Yeah.
You know, very, you know, very challenging to make that work, but are you getting the most value out of those four sides? And I personally think the parking lot side is at most 50% of the value. And it's like you really activating that meeting house lane and maybe figuring out even something for Lancaster would probably make more money over time, frankly, but anyway.
I, I appreciate the feedback. Just one thing to consider, because we looked at actually eliminated the entire retaining wall. As I mentioned earlier, this site is very challenging to break. And we actually had to revise this a half a dozen times just to get to the point of looking at flooding, grading, level, plumbing. Like there was a lot of thought, just so, you know, put into where this wall stops. We really tried actually to eliminate the whole thing. It just, it, we couldn't do it.
Adam, as I recall, um, there was, there were some complications in regard to underground infrastructure that you didn't want to have to redo. It's one, I was, I thought you might talk about that when you talked about where you set the, you know, the floor, the floor level. And also, uh, there are some complications because it's a condominium property and another retail owner tenant on the other side of the lot, which constrained your ability to use the lot as flexibly as we might sit here and imagine. So, I mean, there's a lot of other constraints at play.
You, you brought up really, I, I wasn't even thinking about that, but that was one of the points is the stormwater system. That's in the lot that we tested and verified through multiple engineers and through the borough that can withstand its building in terms of its capacity. Changing the floor level, any lower, you go below that stormwater system and the whole thing gets torn up and redone. The project is small, can't, can't add on another half a million dollars just to redo the storm system.
So you're just keeping the drains higher than the tank?
We're keep, we're keeping what's in place today in place. And 309 where you see it today is the entry. Now it's a lot of our same, where, where did All Brex entrance into that building?
We're basically at All Brex entrance currently. Uh, yeah, I mean, there's an existing stormwater management system that we're trying to tie into. To your question initially about the plan and sort of how it, what sits, what sits there now basically is the footprint of what the building is showing with a little bit, yeah, with a little bit of changes. But I mean, generally speaking, uh, you know, and that was a goal of ours right from the get go was to keep the impervious at or below what the stormwater management can handle. Uh, setting the elevation where it is, you know, it addresses the parking lot side, which I think, you know, we felt and still feel is an important aspect to this building. Pedestrian side, we agreed, we, we went back and forth, you know, at least more than one meeting, trying to figure out how to make that, uh, inviting to the neighborhood and inviting to pedestrians and the foot traffic. We felt like we came to a good, uh, a good landing spot. Been speaking with, you know, tenants, we felt like maybe we can push it a little further. And I think that that time to reflect on it has produced this plan, which I think even further addresses your point of, you know, bringing pedestrian access even more welcoming and more easily accessible.
Mike, do you have any comments, questions that you wanted to raise before we ask Kevin to, uh?
Uh, no, I mean, Adam brought up one of the things that I've been thinking about, which was the number of entrances and where there's one would be more prominently displayed. But it sounds like that's all subject to tenant availability and so forth. So, um, yeah, I guess I just have one question for clarification on, on the elevation down lower right. Kind of looks like it has a wood frame around the doorway on the first floor on all the way to the right. All the way, yeah, there, what is, is that a tenant entrance?
So that was part of a special exception that was received during the entitlement process, approvals. We put that in to accommodate the frontage on Montgomery Avenue. So that'll be a gazebo with seating and flowers or bushes, landscaping that's out there to, and there's proposed entrances to these flowers on that side. That's why that is what it's actually, you know, if you look on this one, there's a gazebo which shows, actually it is on this one, I'll break it over to you. You look on the top left, you can, you can see what you're looking at there.
Oh, I see.
You see it there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kind of working my, Montgomery Avenue technically in a front, thank you for that building.
Yeah, sure.
So that the frontage, that, that side has to be in the frontage requirements. So that's, that's the solution to that.
Oh, I see, understood, okay.
Okay, thanks. So Kevin Walsh, um, thank you for waiting patiently. If you are still, um, in the meeting, we would, we'd like to hear any thoughts you have about this at the moment. Particularly, if you can help us understand, based on the modifications that we've been shown, are there, what kind of approvals would be necessary or are necessary?
So. I get it.
Before I get to that real quick, I just want to jump into, uh, Adam's discussion that I had when I just skimmed over these prior, uh, and some of the concerns that I had. Uh, one of those in regards to retail being permitted in the basement. Uh, the good news there is as long as the use is permitted in that zoning district, uh, updated basement definition in the new ordinance does permit the retail to go in the basement. So that was one of my initial concerns, so I guess that's good news on that front. Add more in, uh, respect to meaning the terrace definitions. So all the standards for the, uh, frontage type for terrace need to be met. And just again, skipping through those, there were a few that caught my eye. The horizontal width of a terrace can be 30 feet max, like I'm sure you far exceed that going up meeting house. So I don't, there's some sort of way to break that up, uh, to meet those definitions or, or standards. I think that's something you guys might want to take a look at. There was another one that had to do with the elevation of the terrace, a three foot max. So I know you have that change in elevation, I just want to make sure all points, that terrace is either three feet above grade or below that number. In addition, I can't tell at the frontage, this only applies to the primary frontage. There's allowed to be a three foot fence or wall along a terrace. Um, so that would be on the street that Michelle, the plan has up, that top left picture where it says retail market.
Yep.
So all fence above the wall would only land to be three feet. Again, that's a, just rendering, so there's no dimensions there, I don't think.
So I, I believe that we received a special exception for the height of this wall and the railing. And.
Okay.
This is exactly, we didn't change that portion of the wall.
Okay, so that would address the fence at the front of the terrace. Uh, I would still revisit the height that the terrace sits above meeting house along any points. I actually think it starts at grade six below it, doesn't it?
So the terrace at the corner is at plus, call it seven, eight feet. And as goes back and meeting house goes up, it eventually comes to a, to a zero entry point.
Yeah, so again, based on the terrace, uh, frontage type standards, that, that seven foot is just too high, it says three foot max.
I think, again, I think that was.
For terrace.
That was part of the special exception that, that, that whole, I mean, that whole terrace, the level of the terrace up at the level where the corner is.
Correct.
We had special exception approval for the height of that railing and also this, this wall. That, that terrace did previously as approved, go all the way to the back of the building to the loading area. So all, all we're doing is decreasing the quantity or the square footage of that by about 85%. We're not modifying the, the height on meeting house or on Montgomery.
Wasn't there a determination from Montgomery Avenue that the, Kevin, you'll have to test my memory on this too. That the elevation from which you measured the height of the terrace was actually the upper level sidewalk, at the street sidewalk? Remember we talked about that? Like where do you measure the base of the measurement? Where do you start the base of the measurement that says how high?
Where the terrace line.
And I think, I think there's determination that because the buildings, the ground level of the building is at the parking lot level, that's the level at which you, you would measure the height of the terrace, not the height of Montgomery Avenue. But Kevin, I think we need to go back and check.
Yeah, I'm not ready to speak on that either.
Yeah, yeah.
But again, looking at the terrace definitions, things like that, was the, the footprint itself, was there that entire large wide section of terrace available or was it broken up prior?
No, it was all contiguous up at the same elevation.
I, I know what you're saying, there was a 30 foot gap, right? That's why we had the tree planters that it cut in, I believe, every 30 feet. I mean, it was contiguous on a level, yes, it was the same finished level. But where you see the trees here, these were all elevated tree pots into the wall to break it up.
Yeah, I think you might want to revisit that.
And we're.
Obviously it breaks up the space, it can make it not as.
Agreed, and we're actually, we are proposing that these images might not show us very well because of all the plantings around it, but that is, that is still part of the plan, right?
We basically, we were dropping literally everything that was up, we're dropping to ground level. Here, this one shows it better.
So I think, um, I think what we'll be is was to go back to the documentation.
Sure.
Of the approval before.
Yep.
To see what the basis of which things got to be there where they were, what's modified and what might be.
Um, a couple of things I'm just going over, uh, be clear, I didn't review any of the new elevations. Obviously they've changed now that the building has the basement and they're kind of, you have a story there, you want to make sure that all the window openings, the changes in the facade match all those requirements for the mixed use standard building type. Obviously I haven't checked those. And, uh, in terms of the residential use, what is the extent of the residential access on the first or whatever you want to call it, first and a half story? Is it just a lobby?
So the residential access, uh, has not changed. It's on the parking lot side at the corner. So as previously proposed, the entrance was here. Uh, the grade level access for this residential lobby is about plus or minus two foot six above the retail, uh, finished floor elevation. That's the same as it is now. Uh, entrance over here hasn't changed. Uh, you know, like I said, basically everything from here around has been maintained as what was already proposed.
And, and there is another means of secondary egress on the other side towards the right. There is secondary stairwell.
Yeah, right here, which again, that hasn't changed, that's where it was previously.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Um, any, anything else besides essentially a residential entrance? Mailrooms, bulk storage, anything like that for the residential use going to be on the first floor?
Yep, so there's a mailroom within the lobby space, again, that was previously proposed. And the light storage space is up on that upper terrace, uh, on the parking lot side over here. Again, that, that hasn't changed either.
Okay, the reason I'm bringing that up is because, um, residential uses are only permitted on the second and third floors. So we just want to make sure that whenever your residential portion taking up a significant portion of that first floor, obviously you need access to and you need some other amenities. But we just maybe want a floor plan or something like that to verify that prior to final approval.
No problem.
I'm sorry, did you say there is a basement level, like a level one down under the building?
Yes, so.
If you don't mind, Adam, Kevin, did you have anything else you wanted to bring to our attention?
No, that was it again, that wasn't a comprehensive review, that was kind of a review in theory. Adam and I discussed when he originally should be dis, disdrey. So I'm just trying to cover as much as I can to make sure that he has the best finished product and will formally resubmit.
Thank you, yeah. And, and as I mentioned to Kevin and to you, this is more information on received feedback from this commission to then go back and make an actual formal, uh, application to modify it.
All I would say is just in your conversations, make sure you revisit all the documentation as well.
We, we.
How this got to be.
Yes, yes. And I believe, separate from, separate from this Kevin, I believe, uh, Alex, Tweedy, your civil engineer did send a, uh, uh, bullet point of changes based on approvals, based on this separately from a civil perspective as opposed to the.
Excuse me, let's just have one. I appreciate your eagerness to help out and understand, but let's just have one because the public is watching too. I want to make sure they don't. Sorry, so go ahead, Adam, did you finish with your?
Uh, I'm done, yeah, I'm done. And then, like I said, we, we did submit a preliminary of, of changes to the actual plan. And this was to take feedback from here and then go back and make a formal application.
Okay, so Adam, I'm sorry, what was your question that you were exploring?
There's just nothing else on, that's not on the drawings in terms of other levels of the building. It's just a three level building, right, not a minus one, four level building.
Right, so again.
With the mezzanine inside.
Finished floor for the retail space is here, right, this elevation?
309.
Correct. When we get over to this area, there's a, there is a sunken basement below the first floor. You enter into this door here, onto a, uh, onto a landing, and then you go a few steps down. So there's a level here that's accessible for the retail space. So there's a partial basement from this point to about here.
I'm just trying to understand, is it two levels then, or is it the interior that's subdivided with a mezzanine level?
So it's, it's, it'll feel, when you walk in here, it'll feel like a mezzanine. You'll walk in, it's a double A space, it's shared by the same tenants, it's not a secondary tenant access.
You're going to go down to the lower level or up to the second level?
Correct. So you enter at this grade, you enter into an intermediate landing where you go down a few steps or you go up a few steps.
What's the level of the lower, what's the elevation?
It is 298. So when you walk in, you have a choice of going from 303 five feet down or six feet up? And there would be designed a lift that stops at all three levels.
Right.
That would not be commingled with the residential lift, it would be a separate part of the transportation.
How deep would that transitional area be before you get to the, not, turn it up?
Not, not designed. But I mean, it's not going to be three feet. It would be enough of a landing that we look at conceptually.
Yeah, I mean, it would probably be seven to eight feet.
Yeah, I mean.
Enough for people to, you know, walk past each other and, you know, pass some circulation space.
Sell some wine.
Sell some.
It's what?
I said sell some wine, not to do it the whole foods.
Yeah, maybe, but every time you change levels, you're essentially losing value in terms of the compression of the space, right? So the, the terrace that wraps around the building from the drawing. So the, the terrace that wraps around the building from the drawing seems to be extremely narrow, right? It's too narrow to put tables out, probably, maybe, I don't know if you get a two-top or something out there. So like that whole, you have, that whole sidewalk, the whole set, the building setback from the curb, like, quite a distance, but you can't use any of it, because it's got, you got the little skinny sidewalk, a buffer, and then another terrace level.
So this terrace level that.
Yeah, that's, that's good, right, that, that's, but that's, that's like the real one. But then the rest of the front edge is this little sliver that wraps around to the wooden folly. So that, that's what I'm talking about, like that sidewalk, you're not getting the value of the setback, you can't populate the setback. And then the, when you do the interior partition, the circulation and whatnot, again, that breaks up the floor area, you have to have all the vertical circulation, so it just, it just, uh, you know, makes it more complicated, expensive, and, and challenging. It just, you have to do what you have to do for this really pitched site. I still wonder if there's more value you could get out of the site by continuing to work on the wall, but again, I just got here. I know a lot of work went into it, so. To get more, if, I mean, if you're looking at, like, being able to have outdoor space to congregate for, for eating or events, like, getting the most out of that frontage, um, all the way around the building, I think will make whatever retail tenant was in there have more potential over time, and, and then, yeah, so, and for the residential too.
Perfect.
Okay. At this point, we appreciate you coming in to kind of share this with us, is there, I, I, I'm not sure we're, we're in a, you know, obviously, this is just informational, is there anything further that you would like from us to write, or?
I, I, I think once we talk further with Mr. Walker and Mr. Walsh about the actual approval process, if we need to come back and ask for your approval prior to going to council for, uh, modifications to the improvement. So, again, if, depending on timing with everybody, because I know there's a lot going on in the borough, it would be our goal to make a formal submission within the next ten days, call it, and then come back in front of you again in a month from now, prior to going to council in the middle of October. That'll be the trajectory, if we could work together to do that.
My sense on everyone is, is, is everyone's sense that this is a, a positive step, in a good direction?
I think it's a really good direction. I think making the, making the stretch of the building that fronts on Meeting House Lane much, much more friendly than it was before, it's a huge improvement in my view over previous concept.
Great, thank you, thank you for everybody's feedback.
Good one, yeah.
Good luck, see you everybody.
Well, um, thanks for keeping at it, it's got to have, has to be tough.
You know, no, no tougher than anybody else. You just keep plugging, that's all you can do. So thank you for everybody's time.
Yeah, thank you.
And see you, um, in a month or so, thank you. Thanks, Kevin, thanks, Michelle.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay. Oh, you're okay, you're the star. Thank you. Okay, so, um, let's move on then to announcements and updates. Briefly, um, um, I believe the three Elmwood, um, um, application is on council's agenda for the month to be voted on. While the applicant did make an informational presentation to council, um, at its last, uh, meeting, um, there's actually been no formal, and, and actually explored some alternative stormwater management approaches. There's been no actual formal submission, therefore, nothing for anyone in the borough to officially review. They showed us something on the screen, but, um, there's actually no documentation that Eric has received or even informally discussed with them, so there's nothing for them to review, nothing for us to review. The applicant also, um, at council, um, um, stated that they no longer believe a, uh, that a waiver, a stormwater waiver is necessary, which they came and requested from us. Um, that is purely a legal question, that's nothing we get in, you know, it's not our purview to interpret and how the code reads and what's necessary or not. Um, and determining that there's actually no new information, it seemed that we had no reason to hear that application again, that our past vote to recommend to council that that project not be reviewed. There's no reason to revisit that, there's no new information that's necessary for us to consider. One forty-six Marion, um, which I just passed out, plans, um, was supposed to be on our agenda for tentative sketch review and approval, um, consideration for approval, but last week, the applicant submitted new information on new zoning calculations, uh, which were in response to, um, Kevin Walsh's letter. If I'm correct, Kevin said that this, that material was, um, should be shown at the preliminary planning stage, but the applicant submitted them now. And so, we determined, the borough staff determined that Kevin Lee and MCPC needed more time to review those recalculation and requested a, uh, an extension of the time to review. So, we don't, that is not on our agenda tonight, because it is still being reviewed by staff, those zoning calculations. So those are, that is why those are not on our agenda tonight, even though you might have expected them to be on our agenda. The only other thing is, I did, uh, for once, did minutes of, of, of a meeting, uh, from last month. I've been coached by our staff about how to do them more efficiently, so there you go. Um, and I would like to know if anyone would like to make a motion regarding the approval of the minutes that I submitted for the August, um, meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
I made a motion, is there a second?
Full second, Dan.
Is there any discussion or, uh, suggestion for corrections?
I like that they're much shorter.
Next time I'll make them a bigger type. Maybe easier to read. I do have one modification, I think it was one place where I referred to Winwood Avenue, and it should be Winwood Road, so we'll fix that. Uh, but if there's no further discussion, um, I'll ask for, uh, open for a total to approve the minutes from August I submitted with one modification on favor. I hope. One other, uh, project update, um, Adam and I have had, um, a lot of email back and forth with, um, the borough manager about moving forward on our recommendation about some sort of study of, um, multimodal improvements for pedestrian bicycle safety. I think, I think we've, uh, the, the borough manager is extremely excited about taking the leadership of maybe this along, and we sort of had to provide some context for what we're looking for and how to look at the work that Adam did. Because as usual, people look at one thing really literally and get hung up on it. But I'm very hopeful, um, that, because Samantha Bryant has been, um, very much in communication with us, that we will see some movement on, um, developing some sort of, uh, study or recommendations that can be actually used to apply for funding, or to, um, potentially even provide a kind of direction for anyone who's doing construction along Winwood, Winwood Road. Adam, would you like to say anything about this? And thank you, Adam, for moving at all.
I think you hit the major points, the next step would be to maybe do a joint study on, uh, especially for Woodside, which is where the greenway is proposed to cross Winwood Road.
So we will, we will keep at it, and keep, keep pressing. And then finally, um, I need to go out of my, I'd like to announce on behalf of the Norber Bicycle Club. Can you see up there on the screen? Saturday, it's coming, uh, Saturday at nine o'clock, um, there is going to be a ride of the Main Line Greenway. See that red line there? Hard to see, but that is a line that connects, uh, from, uh, from the Kinwood, uh, the, the train station in Bala Kinwood, uh, through Norber, uh, over to, uh, Haverford College.
Todd, this is not going through to the meeting, because you're not sharing your screen, but.
Okay, well, this is, uh. Let me see if I can do that. Too much, uh, unrequited technology. The, um, the bicycle club, um, I can't see it, sure.
There's that.
There it is. It's in the public, you can see that. There's a bicycle ride, the Main Line Greenway started Saturday at nine o'clock, September eighteenth, at Kinwood Station, um, trails on Cafe, which is actually a great place to end a bike ride, uh, which will go to Haverford College. And I, the, the Main Line Greenway is a concept to use not the major arteries, but the kind of side streets, the residential streets, and a kind of integrated network for bicycles among the communities on the main line. And the bicycle club, particularly since the Plating Commission knows this, because they think it's important for us to understand its concept, how, and how it could be implemented. I believe it'll probably be led by, I'm just going to guess here, by Bicycle Club and Chris Lesswing, who tends to, to lead these bike rides. So, um, if you are at all inclined to take a bike ride Saturday morning, uh, I urge you to do it. I've done it a few times myself, um, and, um, I found it a really useful way to learn how to, how to get around. And it has made me think a lot about the way we can try to help, uh, enhance the cause of better bicycle protection, so. I think that is, uh, that is it for my report. I've asked Mike, uh, to give a brief report on progress on the subdivision and lane development ordinance.
Sure, and just real briefly, Todd, is there a website for that, uh, bike ride?
Looks like, um, if you look on the screen now, I don't know if the public can see this. Mike, are you asking that just to the public to know, or is it because you're interested?
Both. It looks like it's ridewithgps.com, is that right?
Well, that is, that is a map, a map of the group. I believe the Norber Bicycle Club has a Facebook page. So if anyone in the public is interested, go to the Facebook page, I can forward this to you. If anyone in the public cannot figure out how to get in touch, email me at norberthplatingcommission.com, at gmail dot com, and I will, um, you know, the address which public comment is, uh, accepted, and I will forward this to you, so that you have.
Thank you.
Okay, but I'll send it to you.
Okay, so for the SADO update, um, I talked to Aaron Holly, and he got me up to speed. Uh, work progresses on the SADO, and tomorrow, there is a meeting with the working group, uh, uptown super officials that Aaron has had. And his goal is to get the draft of the design chapter out in October or November. And for the planned processing chapter, he asked for comments. He did receive some comments, um, potentially minor in nature from the staff, including being asked to include the informal plan and review process. And so, that's, you know, I think that's something that, that everyone general tends to always support. But the only concern is, is, uh, ensuring that it falls within the, the time clock and the required, uh, nine-day period. So there may be some discussion about, about where they fit in, if, if they fit in, um, and how that comes.
Can you, can, so, when you, you said plan stack? Um, so first of all, let me, if you don't mind, just a short hang on a second. Several months ago, I forwarded everyone the Plating Commission, uh, the first half of the SADO draft, which is about the process through which lane development applications are submitted and reviewed. If you haven't looked at that, if you can't find it, I know that to many of you, this is a critical thing. And so I urge you to look at it, and I assume there's still time to comment on it, because it's all being drafted. But, but that is, I know since many of you care about this, that's an important kind of feedback to do, so. I lost, you said plan stack, I kind of couldn't process. Can you go back and, and, and say again when?
Uh, well, with, with the staff, uh, I was just mentioning how, um, the staff had, um, sent comments back to Aaron regarding the planned processing requirements, and.
What is the staff?
Uh, uh, oh, I'm sorry, is the Shade Treaty Advisory Committee?
Okay.
Sorry, okay. Aaron referred to it, but by that term, uh, I'm not sure if that was a common term.
It went over my head, but.
Okay.
That's just me.
Yeah, I mean, um, sometimes it's just Shade Treaty Commission, so I'm not sure.
So the Shade Treaty, yes, I remember seeing that.
Okay, okay. So, um, you know, and, and this is, um, something that is occurring, uh, in other communities I know, or they're trying, we're trying to get the comments, or those municipalities are trying to get the Shade Treaty Commission's comments more formally, um, put into the process as a matter of routine. So that was, uh, that was really it with updates.
Okay. I know I'm delinquent in providing that feedback to you. I think I read them, and my first impression was, we really need to, I need to take a closer look at what documentation is provided at the tentative phase, and if it's consistent with what is necessary to understand compliance with the zoning code. Because I think, you know, there's a huge disconnect right now to what is submitted and what is needed to demonstrate compliance with the code, and some things don't come into the preliminary stage, which requires great, you know, investment just to find out if your zoning compliance doesn't work, so. I know I made a note to, to myself to do that and didn't. So all I can say is I urge you guys, you know, to take, to take a look at those process notes, if you can find it. And then, did you say you, you think that, that those comments, that, that the design component of the SADO would be submitted in October?
He said, uh, Aaron said his goal is to get the draft of the design chapter out in October or November.
Okay, so that means we could potentially look at it in November or December? Okay, do you have anything else, do you have any questions about the subdivision? Okay, you all know how important this is, so. If you can't find that, that draft, let me know. Okay, thank you, Mike. I think that's it for the announcements and updates. So, let us conclude with our last agenda item, and then we'll have public comment at the end about infill housing topics now. I have, today, um, the borough manager sent out a, uh, closed agenda for the next council meeting, and I did alert her that we're working on some broad recommendations for infill housing, and, and asked her to consider what the appropriate time for us to deliver, um, you know, report to council would be, and when council would be able to give us feedback. My goal is to take the work we're doing, um, and discuss it with council to get their feedback kind of on a policy point of view. Are they generally happy with the direction we're going in? Do they support these ideas? And then, uh, we would, uh, come back and, and work with MCPC, develop the actual, uh, code, code amendment for infill, for different infill houses, so that's, and I would like to be able to go back to councils as soon as possible. So tonight, what I hope, and I, I printed out the emails I sent you in case anyone, does anyone need printouts of the, um, the notes that I sent around?
Okay.
Anyone over there need them? So what I hope is that we can.
I'll, I'll take them, sure.
See how close we can get to, um, consensus about what we would like to tell council or recommend it. And I hope my notes represent accurately the conversations we've had today. If not, just point out where you feel they vary from what we've already agreed. So starting, uh, with accessory dwelling units, I think we, the bullet point at the top indicate a number of issues where I think we did come to consensus at our last meeting. indicate a number of issues where I think we did come to consensus at our last meeting. I listened to the audio tape the other day just to confirm that. And I think there are a couple of issues that are remaining to discuss, some of which we actually tabled at the last meeting and some of which are kind of mentioned and I thought it'd be good to bring them back up to talk about. And so the four issues remaining to discuss are, should ADUs be permitted only in owner-occupied properties? We didn't actually discuss that a whole lot, but Chloe, in her report, Chloe in her report to us, said that looking throughout Haverford County, that was generally the case. She said, first of all, most communities try to stop ADUs, but those that have ADUs, limit them to properties that are occupied by the owner. Should there be a different metric for managing the overall size of an ADU that's form-based rather than a maximum floor area? I'm sure you all remember the discussion. We're proposing eight hundred square foot total habitable space, but wondering whether there's more of a form-based approach we can have to that, if that's possible. Should conversions of non-conforming accessory buildings to ADUs be allowed even if life safety codes are met? A non-conforming building would basically mean, in the conversations we were having, non-conforming because it doesn't conform to required setbacks. That was the tenor of our conversation. And should there be limits? This is something that came from questions Jim Spear raised. Should there be limits to the amount that a non-conforming accessory building can be expanded to be an ADU? So if we were allowed, to allow a non-conforming accessory building, like a garage, to be converted to an ADU, would we allow it to be expanded and how much? I will flag that we do have a provision of the code already that says if you expand a non-conforming structure, you cannot increase the non-conformity. So you actually would not be able to expand it within, you can only expand it within the legal area, within setbacks. And also say elsewhere, we are in one shape or form recommending a maximum size of an ADU. So that's a question that might take care of itself. I don't know. So those were the issues, I think, remaining on the table after our last meeting, based on my review of the papers. And I think it would be valuable to see if we can have a consensus of any of these in terms of what we report to council, in terms of recommendations. So I'm gonna start with the last one, actually. Question Jim raised about expanding the amount that a non-conforming accessory building can be expanded or limiting that amount. Since the code already prevents a non-conforming use, a non-conformity to be expanded, and since we would propose a maximum size of an ADU anyway, I wonder if that's really a issue.
Why would you want to do that?
Do what?
Why would you want to approve, referring to the final bullet point? So why would you want to, why would you want to expand a non-conforming accessory building?
Why would a person want to do that?
Why would we want to, why would we want to allow? What purpose it serves?
Yeah, I think it's a non-issue.
Yeah, I think it's a non-issue too. I mean, it seems like-
Wait a minute. Is it a non-issue in that it should not be allowed?
Right.
It should not be allowed. Wait a minute. The issue that should not be allowed to expand to further than non-conformity or to expand in a direction that does not increase the non-conformity? Is that the issue?
Don't increase the non-conformity.
So could potentially add to an existing accessory building in a way that does not increase its existing non-conformity?
Right.
That's, is that the question or is that accepted?
The code right now, the section I excerpted-
Yeah.
Says that you can expand a non-conforming, maybe structure that does not conform to setback requirements, but you cannot increase the part that doesn't conform. You can only increase it in ways that conform to the setback.
So if you had a property in concrete terms, if you had a structure that was already too close to the property line-
Right.
And thereby, non-conforming to the setback requirements, you could expand it in the other direction into the center of the property.
Right. Yes, that's allowed under the code now. And we also have a limit to how big an ADU could be in any case. So really, this is tied to the previous bullet, which is-
Yeah.
Should we allow for conversion of a non-conforming accessory building to an ADU? Again, assuming all life safety codes are met, and Kevin in our last meeting said, you know, the building's on the property line, they're not gonna be able to windows, you can't have windows, you can't have bedrooms, so it's not likely they're gonna turn that into an ADU. You know, assuming the life safety codes are met, should conversions of non-conforming accessory buildings to ADUs be allowed?
I would say it depends on the adjacent property.
It depends on what?
On the adjacent property. Depends on how it's non-conforming. You know, if it's right up next to somebody else's property that's wide open, but then it should not be allowed because that would be non-conforming and that would be a disservice to your neighbor. But if your neighbor is nonexistent, like say it's a street, a backstreet, a strange lot that connects in an odd way, I would think that that should be a special exception.
That's interesting.
So I mean, I guess it would help for me to visualize concretely the terms here because it doesn't seem like there's really that much of an issue if you're, the building is existing, it's just a change of use. And so if it's a zero lot line built through the property line, you know, then we wouldn't allow them to put a new window in the wall. But otherwise, I don't, I'm not sure I see where the controversy would be if it's a garage that's being turned into a bedroom. You know, I mean, what's the harm to your neighbor?
Especially, as I pointed out before, the, I think the, you know, in some cases aside, setback is three feet. So we're really just talking about things that are two feet instead of three feet. Right, one feet instead of two feet. If it were like, you know, a ten-foot setback required in the building or, you know, one feet away from property line, that would be a big deal. But go ahead, Jen.
What about a case where, say I already own a one-story garage, a four-hundred-square-foot garage that's, does not need side yard setback, and I want to expand it by adding a floor above? Is that considered extending a non-conformity? Because that second floor would technically also be, does not need setback.
Interestingly, the code provision I cited says it shall create no additional building coverage, so you're not creating additional building coverage.
So that would be allowed then?
Well-
Yeah, if you guys didn't mind, my interpretation on that would be yes, you can definitely vertically go up within the same footprint, assuming you meet the height requirements.
Even though it's non-conforming?
Yeah, you're not, like Todd just said, you're not creating new building coverage, just maintaining the same.
One of the only thoughts I have about the non-conforming use and reuse of the non-conforming building is, if there's a detached accessory building, say towards the rear of the lot, and it's, say, within the setback, and it's currently not being utilized for much, you know, it's maybe storage or what have you, but then it's converted so that someone's living there and maybe that person is looking out the window into your backyard more, maybe you have a perceived loss of privacy. So now it gets like, it's down to the buffering requirements and things like that, orientation requirements of an accessory dwelling.
But to be fair, that potential perceived loss of privacy, it's not intrinsic to a non-conforming use. It would be intrinsic to a new structure being built because our setbacks are like three feet.
Okay. Well, it's only three. Yeah.
So, and that's what I'm saying, the difference between something that's non-conforming and conforming is not real large, but potentially in most cases.
I think what I keep on turning over in my head, what sort of bothers me about this whole thing is, and I'm thinking about, you know, that house that recently completed in Dublin, where the house was, for all intents and purposes demolished, except enough of it was retained, so it wasn't, you know, in fact, a new structure, but in terms of everything else, it is a new structure. And here, we seem to be falling into the same trap where somebody could take a non-conforming existing structure and essentially repurpose it, leaving a minimal amount, just enough so that it's still a non-conforming existing structure, but the new, the result is, you know, a completely different place than what it started out as.
I will just say again, in all these zoning districts we're talking about, the minimum rear, the minimum size, three feet.
I'm not talking about setbacks, no.
But that's, so what is, what is the concern?
The concern, the concern is that we're opening up a way of basically building new structures in a non-conforming alignment by keeping just enough of the existing so that it would fall under the code, but in fact, it's essentially, for all intents and purposes, a new structure, non-conforming. And that bothers me.
Well, I think there's certainly merit to that argument. I think one other way though to look at it, sort of the same issue from a different direction, is that you're making the best of what is a non-conforming structure, right? So the structure is there, if it's a garage and it's not really being very well used, you're not really getting, you know, that much out of it.
No.
And so if you make it into a habitable space, it may be adding a lot of, you know, value for the community and you're not really changing the footprint of the building. So it's just about the use, it's not really about, I guess, breaking the rules, if that makes sense? But if you're gonna put a new building in, then, you know, you would follow the setbacks. I mean, to the point about privacy and all that, it's, the reality is like, most yards, a lot of yards can be seen from adjacent houses, that's probably the common condition. And in some ways, it's almost worse to imagine a window that faces into somebody else's yard, it's worse for the person on the other side of the window looking, you know, feeling the privacy. So there's architectural ways to deal with that, encouraging some lines and all that, but it's, or just the better solution is to have the windows face not onto your neighbor's property.
I'm not sure it's just a matter of privacy, it's a matter of light in there and openness, you know. Somebody's vegetable garden is now, you know, in permanent shade, yeah, there are a lot of things that you start talking about, you know, building onto an existing non-conforming structure that's small and low and pretty and obtrusive and all of a sudden, it's not.
But what is the real difference between them simply tearing it down, that non-conforming structure, building a new one two feet away?
Well, the difference, and the reason that we established three-foot setback for accessory buildings was so that they could be maintained. If you have three feet, you can get a ladder up to the roof. If you don't have three feet, you need your, you need your neighbor's permission to put a ladder on his property to get up to your, to maintain your roof. And the, I have, I have one of these, so I know wherever I speak because fortunately I get along with my neighbors. But in order, in order to get up to fix a shingle on my roof, I need to put a ladder on their property. Unfortunately, there's no fence, so I can do that. But if it's, if it's, if the setback is less than three feet, you have no way to work on this, on this little building. And I think that was the essence of the reason for the three-foot setback in the first place.
So I'm curious, Adam and Jen, what you're, I mean, I think that's a very good argument, that-
Thank you.
We would not want to encourage the repurposing of a building that can't be taken care of in that way. But I'm curious, Adam and Jen, because Jen, I know you're interested in the kind of-
It also just-
Preservation and reuse of structures.
Well, I'll-
I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask Adam and Jen to see if they can respond to that argument.
I will, I'll take it. And, you know, I like Jim's basis for his argument, being one of maintaining the structure as a habitable structure. I think that my reading of the code might be a little bit, might be a little bland, but I read it as being that an existing structure can, if it's not conforming, can stay as is, but cannot be used as a pro forma for future development. You can't use it as a basis, you can't build upon it, taking what it is and make it any more than that. An existing structure must remain as is. If not, you update it to code. That is my understanding. So the subjectivity of light and space and invasion of privacy and maintaining privacy and what is the quality are all, to my mind, sort of extra. Like, I don't see it as essential to the argument.
Adam, what's your thought about? It sounds like you're seconding Jim's argument in a sense.
Yes.
Adam, do you have a?
I don't, I don't think we should invent paper tigers personally, right? So if there's a garage there today and it has a roof and it's built too close to the property line, that's the property owner's problem to figure out how to maintain that roof. If they need to get permission to put a ladder in, that's their problem. The building already exists, right? We're not gonna build new buildings like that, although personally, I'm not even sure, you know, that's the rule, we should follow these existing rules. I have a twin house, it's non-conforming because the party wall of my twin house is not symmetrical seventy years ago, put an addition on, on the zero lot line, right? So I can maintain my roof, but if I need, you know, to stucco the other side of the wall, the other side of the wall is accessible from the neighbor's property. That's reality, that's my problem, it's my neighbor's problem, but you're not gonna tear my house down or tell me the bedroom doesn't belong back there. And there's no windows that face onto my neighbor's property and I would add that I don't think it really, I don't think that that's a real issue. And as far as you and the shade, like, I get it, like, I, you know, we all want the world to be as good as it can be for everybody. But if my neighbor plants a tree, I have a tree, it started to shade my neighbor's wonderful heirloom tomatoes. I mean, I actually went through and lopped off some of the branches this year, you know, to try to get a couple more hours of sunlight for the tomatoes and, you know, soon that tree, someday it will die, it'll come down and so on. But, you know, conditions are always changing and we adapt. We're entitled to what we're entitled to on our property, but not necessarily to tell our neighbors, you know, certain, certain elements. So I think if, if I was a property owner that had a garage too small for a car, but large enough, you know, to be used as an ADU, you know, I think that's a fair, a fair expectation personally.
Jim, before, I'd like Dave, Dave, you can follow up.
Well, I was just gonna elaborate on Jim's point, that it's not only a matter of three feet to get a ladder in, it's a matter of the fire separation between properties, which as we talked about many times here, which is kind of a sacred issue with building codes. And the more, obviously, the more, the more distance you have from a property line to a decent wall, the greater fire separation.
You need a, you need a fireman to be able to drag a hose around.
And that's not something you lightly dispose of. Now, obviously, you know, we have a city of row houses nine miles away where property lines are, are party walls and we have twins and so, and the fire, the building codes deal with those issues. But for the vast majority of structures and accessory structures here that have no fire separation, you know, I think it's a point that you don't lightly dispose of.
Jim, what's your thought?
I just wanted to point out that issue of ADUs aside, if I-
I just wanted to point out that issue of ADUs aside, if I own a non-conforming garage by virtue of not meeting side yard setback today, and it's only 14 feet high, I'm within my rights to build it up to, what is it, 25 feet? And I believe Kevin just confirmed that that's, by code, is perfectly allowed. So, the issue of shading someone else's property and the issue of maintenance, we already have that issue when, when a non-conforming garage or accessory building is expanded upward in that way. So, really, the issue of
Dave?
Sorry?
Sorry, if you don't mind me jumping in there, luckily, while you could expand vertically, the accessory structure limits it to one story. So, you can raise the roof up, but you wouldn't be able to add a second story.
Well, okay, but I could theoretically make it 25 feet high, and increase the shade on my neighbor's yard, and increase the, the burden of maintenance and all that. Is that correct?
I mean, again, the accessory, the maximum height of accessory structures is 16 feet, so
16, okay.
And I guess if you did a super steep pitched A-frame, yeah, to get the tip up there, but I think the structure standards validate what you're allowed to do, I think, the size of it anyway.
And remember, we are, I believe, recommending that the existing height limits, I mean --
Okay, sorry, I just, I remember the numbers, but if I had, so if I had a smaller accessory structure, I could build it up to its maximum, apparently, 16 feet.
But that is interesting, like, Kevin, Kevin, what you're saying, that you're only allowed a one-story structure. So, I think what, one of the issues we were discussing was whether it could be a one-and-a-half story structure, but it can't.
Unless we change something.
You can only have, unless, unless what?
Unless we change something. Unless you change the rules.
Unless you change, well, we haven't developed the rules yet.
Right.
But, but currently, the way it is, is you're only allowed one-story struc, accessory structure. So, if we want to have it be a one-and-a-half story or two accessory structure, which it would be hard to be two with a 16-foot height, but then we'd have to conform to the setbacks. I mean, I think that's the argument here.
Well, if I may, the last time, Heidi, you brought up some interesting points about design of the roof and half levels and so on. I think that we're trying also not to have the building sprawl all over the site, right? So, putting a lofted bedroom inside one of these existing non-conforming structures, to me, is probably preferable than pushing the walls out, you know, in, in sense of like, you know, what's gonna be better for the site plan, right? You know, a larger footprint might not be preferable versus having a loft.
Well, so Kevin, if you took a one, one-and-a-half story garage, say it's existing with a loft, and it's non-conforming, it's too close to the property line, and you wanna make it an accessory dwelling unit, and use that second story space, but the second floor is in fact in, so it is, the walls are actually further than three feet from the property line, so if, can you use that point as your usable space, as, as that's bigger than three feet, even though the walls may be two feet?
Can you ask me if you could use the second floor currently, as it's like a reduced size?
No, if, if we were to allow accessory dwelling units to be one-and-a-half story tall, could they go into an existing garage that's too close to par, to the property line? If the walls are set in because of the roof? I mean, that's, that is, that, yeah, because of the roof cut.
We did, we did mention this at a previous meeting, that, that height limit, 16 foot, apparently, is only measured to the midpoint of a sloped roof.
Right.
So, this building could be quite a bit taller, and it could have dormers.
Right. Well, that's true too.
Yeah, so that second floor can be substantial.
But that, but the question is whether, because, I mean, it's very, I'm used to designing to a setback where whatever you're building new has to conform to the setback, so it's a little different than what Kevin was saying, whereas if you're going, oh, it doesn't have to conform to the setback. So, that's just sort of a different interpretation of the code, and I think that's, that's what I'm trying to confirm, I guess, but Kevin, you're saying that you could go straight up even though it's two feet from the property line?
Yeah, to the maximum height limit. In terms of the stories, kind of how we define what a story is, for example, this, this has come up in a borough where you've had a one-and-a-half story building, or a one-story, and they wanna build a partial second story.
Yeah.
If a portion above the first story meets the minimum ceiling height requirements and minimum room requirements, we call it a story, you couldn't just call it storage. This is what a lot of people were trying to do on paper, to get the second story. In terms of what you're saying as well, as I mentioned, the residential code would pick up on some alterations that you'll have to do, if you are less than three feet from the property line, and that was a storage space, that, that didn't need to be fire-rated, even if it was new. Whereas now, it's a habitable occupied space, you need to make some upgrades to provide some fire ratings on those exterior walls.
Yeah.
And this gets back to my earlier point, which is, for all intents and purposes, the degree, and Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but the degree of renovation that you're talking about in doing all of this stuff is so great that even under the existing building code, the IBC existing building code, you're essentially building a new structure. It comes back to, you know, you're building a new structure on some non-conforming footprint, and all that's really left in essence is the footprint.
Right. I don't know, are we beating this to death?
We are.
Yeah, I'd like to have a consensus though, as to what we can, we can suggest.
But I guess if you don't let people do it, you're saying you have to tear down the garage.
Right. And, and not build within the three-foot setback.
Yeah, if you're gonna build an ADU, you gotta tear down the garage. I say that without any hint of regret.
Well, but I thought we talked all about how that's not very environmental to become a luxury.
No, it is not.
Right.
And then we talked about the slab or foundation, and are there footings, and what can be, you know, what are the remnants of, I mean, I think there's probably room for development there in terms of tying into some kind of like, green-based, you know,
Well, yeah, I, I
life cycle of materials.
And I'm, I'm a big believer in the fact that renovation is the most sustainable thing, but we're dealing with structures here that are generally, and I own one of them, are so substandard that to try to make them into a habitable, code-compliant building is, is a false hope, frankly.
I think you expressed it, yeah.
And that, from a sustainable standpoint, you're much better off demolishing it and starting over, building in current code with current, with current requirements, than trying to make this, this structure that from the day was built was substandard, and trying to make something out of it.
Yeah, and it, and it's healthier, call it, you know, it's cleaner in terms of clean air, clean, you know, clean water.
So, I'm, I'm gonna suggest, in sake of moving on, that it feels to me like there's a slight, hundreds of consensus on the side of simply not allowing non-conforming buildings to be converted. And the reason being that while there may be, there may be instances where that could actually work, that the cans of worms that were opening up by allowing non-conforming buildings to be converted can lead to so many headaches, code headaches, compliance headaches, that it's just cleaner, as someone said, to say, if you want an ADU, you have to build something.
What, is it possible that we could get some data to look at before we make that decision? I mean, I just feel like we should have some.
What kind of data would help inform that?
How many of these structures are we even dealing with? You know, because I just, and, and are there, you know, are there key candidates that basically show one way or the other, the point that's being made here? Because I'm not sure that I'm convinced that, like, you know, that it's, that there's, there's buildings out there that you would want to tear down, frankly. I think you might want to save them, it might be preferable, so that's my perspective. I wouldn't, I'd like to see the data.
Yeah, well, the only ones you might wanna keep up are the ones that have been built, the ones that Henry Bailey has built, like, in his backyard and elsewhere.
There must
Those might be the
I'm sure there are some existing structures that are not compliant
Those are brand new.
that would be perfectly good to use as they are now. I know, I know several, you know, I mean, several
Jim, I think what they're saying though is, to be converted from a garage to a habitable unit, there's a lot of work you have to do for, to meet safety codes or that.
Yeah, that's the problem.
That basically means you have to reconstruct.
But then it's, they're self-enforcing, is my point. If, if you need to make structural changes
That's the problem.
They're needed, right?
And that's why I'm gonna kind of fall on the side of the others, is it's not self-enforcing. It's Kevin Walsh enforcing, it's, it's Borough Planning Commission, it's Borough Council, it's John Walker enforcing. It is not self-enforcing. It's people, our experiences trying to get around whatever little opportunity they have to, to push these things. And they're, they're, unfortunately, I think, I think, I think what will happen, what could potentially happen is, is people could start coming in and making applications to convert these garages that can't be converted, or just doing it illegally, because they've heard they can do it. I honestly think things are not self-enforcing.
I'm sorry, whatever you did, right. But we've been limiting mostly our discussion to non-conformities about setback non-conformities. What about non-conformities of, of secondary utility buildings that are non-conforming because they're either too big or too tall, but do meet setback currently?
Well, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Uh, you know, there are, there are utility buildings that are taller than 16 feet, you know, there are utility buildings that have more than one floor, you know, there, frankly, there are utility buildings that are, there are people living in them today, you know, that I can think of two or three.
That are bigger than the minimum.
Yeah. So, I mean, there are, there is a world of other non-conformities that are not setback-related, but they are, you know, there, there are existing non-conformities that may not
What are you saying?
That I believe we should, we should allow ADU use in a utility building, that, I mean, that doesn't necessarily, you know, that
It's existing.
Yeah, that may have some existing non-conformities. I don't think we're talk, we have been discussing all of them at this meeting. We've been limiting it to setback.
But we, I think we're talking about new
I don't know, we're asking whether an existing building that doesn't conform to the code, zoning code, could be converted.
Yeah, say it meets side yard and backyard setbacks on all sides, but it's just simply too tall. Are we saying that that is not eligible, eligible for conversion to ADU?
Well, if you're saying, like, right now, it's being used as, as a dwelling unit, it's not in conformance with the code.
Well
Well, it's not, I mean
No, but he's saying if there's an existing building that's not being used right now, could that be
Oh, no, I thought, then I misunderstood, I thought, I thought Jim was saying a building that's presently being used as a dwelling.
Well, he said both.
I threw that in, but, you know, there are
So, that's what I heard.
Okay, there are some utility buildings, secondary buildings that are too tall, according to our code, and therefore, they're non-compliant, but they do meet, they do meet side yard setback. So, I'm saying, are we really throwing away that, the opportunity to convert that into an ADU simply because it's too tall?
That doesn't make sense.
No, I don't think it's simply because it's too tall.
Yeah, I don't think
It's simply because
That's a separate issue.
It, it's, it's, it's not, it, it, it requires a degree of renovation that makes it go from an accessory building to a new construction.
But I don't
It just does.
I don't understand this point, because people can build a new house on the lot, I mean, and they have to meet the code, so you're saying that we're not gonna be able to have the capacity to do code enforcement on renovations of existing utility buildings? Like, it'll be two, two, will be flooded with these applications or illegal activity, and there won't be the ability to enforce the
Well, I think the home enforcement issue is a separate, pardon
So, let's ask Kevin
It's an important issue, but it's a separate issue.
Kevin, you had a thought about this issue about, what we're, what we're struggling with here is, I think we know in the real world, that the predomin, the preponderance of older utility buildings or garages, in, in order to be made, to be made usable for a residential occupation, would require an extraordinary amount of renovation. Is it realistic to think that that is something that, you know, we can manage through our zoning and permitting processes, or is it better simply to say, if you wanna create an accessory dwelling that is used for residential purposes, you have to start new? What, what's your assessment, Kevin, of the manageability of a process where people can convert an existing building into a, an existing, you know, accessory building into a, into a residential use? Is that, is that something that we, would be easy to manage from a review point of view?
Uh, well, the, well, the good news is that I'll do, obviously, both zoning and building, so I'll be able to kind of keep track of what they're trying to do and how that translates into reality during construction. I thought we'd get a lesson translation there. The one thing, I think it's up to you guys to kind of decide where, and the extent of the size that you'd like to make them. I think it's enforceable to keep track of them, I don't think there's gonna be a slowdown. However, I mean, that's one of the biggest questions I say no to, is how many people call once every week asking to convert these? I, I, code right now is ambiguous, ambiguous, both the zoning and the building code, in terms of construction versus new construction. What, what defines one or the other? I've usually said that as long as you're keeping exterior walls in the same, but then, yeah, that's gonna be reconstruction, not new construction. I think when you were speaking about loopholes, and obviously, they're all gonna find loopholes, legally, if, have an engineer that'll sign off on anything, says, hey, well, these exterior walls aren't in good shape, they gotta get rid of them, I have to make them get rid of them, but they're doing it for safety, not to get an advantage. So, now they're really getting new construction, whereas it's reviewed under reconstruction as a loophole. So, that's interesting. Again, you're probably getting now, new constructed building that doesn't meet setbacks. I think a loophole that an engineer said the exterior walls were, you know, insufficient around stable or something like that. So, there's a big loophole, we'll see. Getting back to what Jim said, as long as you continue to limit the, the height and stories of accessory structures, that's, I would call them the habitable stories. So, if you have a three-story or two-story utility room that was existing that met setbacks, we would only let you apparently occupy the first story as the ADU, not the second or potentially third. That's really all I have, honestly. It's, it's, it's a pretty complex, like you said, when it comes to mixing the zoning code requirements, and then not really fully understanding what the implications are on the back end with the residential code requirements, and will, will be triggered by those. So, that's what I've been digesting this, and is, if I hear something that you're suggesting, think, okay, that might trigger something, the, the code requirement for destructibility, I've kind of been jumping in. But I think if you define those parameters, how large and where you want them, it's not gonna completely, you know, get all in with the idea.
Kevin, I know you, it's our job to kind of make policy recommendations, but I'm curious what you think. Is it, is it just easier all around to, is it clearer all around simply to allow these to, this type of use to occur only in new construction? Is that just sort of a cut to the quick and eliminate a lot of the bogginess of things? Or are we losing
I mean, I, I think it's clear because you, there's no loopholes, if everything's black and white, there's gonna be confusion between what zoning allows and what building code allows, they're both gonna be wanting the same. I understand the point of, if you do have a usable building that's not conforming with setbacks, why are we penalizing them and not allow that to happen? I do see both sides of the coin here, but yes, new construction is obviously cleaner and easier to enforce.
Can I just ask for one clarification in terms of code references used for, you had mentioned new construction versus what you termed, Kevin, reconstruction, because a structural engineer deemed the, the structure faulty or something, so it required new walls or whatever the case. In which case, would you use, you know, I've been using the existing building code to do a renovation, and the existing building code is basically And the existing building code is basically, it's very lenient with very few exceptions. And I'm repeating myself from the last meeting about this, but just for clarification. Existing building code basically says you can build exactly what was there, just so long as you don't make it any more dangerous than it already was. They don't say what it, you know, they don't give you a number about anything. It's basically just saying, it's all grandfathered in. So I'm, I'm curious to know in, in terms of an accessory dwelling unit, the example you just gave that you called reconstruction, what do, are you referring to like the reconstruction of an existing building?
I agree with what you're saying in terms of you're allowed to kind of do whatever you need to get the code closer to code compliance and be grandfathered in from the technical codes, from the, either whether using the existing building code or the residential code. So I agree with that point there. But the zoning code won't allow you to do that. So I, all like if you lose, if you don't use it, you lose it. Or if you voluntarily demolish or remove something, you'll lose that. You lose that non-conformity. Those codes again, they're kind of going against each other. But the loophole to the zoning code is that an engineer can say it's not structurally safe. And then they'll allow you to voluntarily remove walls while maintaining the zoning non-conformity. Whereas the existing building code and residential code are giving you non-conformities when it comes to construction.
No, I'm stuck on this because I know there are existing utility buildings that are very well-built and were built to be habitable in some way, not necessarily as livable structures, but as sort of secondary. I think John Walco just, just, just opinioned that you can build a kind of like a secondary living room on top of your garage, you know, as long as it's not a, a separate residence of its own or something like that. So I know there are structures out there. I mean, I know of them that are perfectly, very solidly built to be not habitable, but, but what's the term? Just like person.
Usable.
Person, usable, you know, yeah. Yeah, like sitting rooms or, or, you know, gaming rooms or something that people have built for themselves.
That's habitable.
Yeah, okay. Are we saying that these are going to just be ruled out as conversion to ADUs no matter how well they're built already?
I'll bring that back to you, guys.
Well, except we're, we're not talking about these things being used as an occasional living room. We're talking about places where people are going to sleep.
Yeah.
And that brings, brings it into a whole nother level in terms of compliance.
So we're, we're asking them to tear the whole thing down and build it possibly exactly the same way again to, to turn it into an ADU? Is that, I mean, that's a strange scenario.
If I understand you, Jim, it's like the new construction is not the issue. Compliance with life safety codes is the issue. And to Kevin's point, he's, to Kevin's point, when he said the loophole, the loophole is about the setbacks, right? If the existing footprint breaks, the zoning setbacks is non-conforming and you substantially reconstruct the building, you have been able to, to generate a building that is not following the setbacks because it was already not following the setbacks. That's a separate issue in my mind from life safety and code compliance. Which is what you're talking about, Jim, if I understand. I mean, if you can make the building safe, it's safe, one way or the other.
Yeah, but he talked about size too. You were talking, originally you were saying we were going to limit it to 800 square feet.
Yeah.
But if you have a 1,200 square foot utility building, you should be allowed to make it into an ADU if it's conforming and all.
That was the original question as it's posed down here, but I feel like we've, this discussion has lowered the bar even more to, to ruling out all existing utility buildings.
I'm just trying to find out a, a way we can.
Oh, no, I don't think that's.
There's got to be nothing left.
Yeah, that's not how to do anything.
I agree with you. There's a lot of good structures out there, interesting.
So that gets us back to the other side of the coin, which is that if the only, you know, if, if the life safety codes are met and if, if a building, even if the building is stripped down with its foundation and rebuilt back up in the scenarios that David's describing, it's, it is compliant with building codes and life safety codes, then all we are losing, not losing, but permitting by allowing non-conforming buildings to be converted to ADUs is, is that little bit of distance that might be less than, than three feet. It's the encroachment on the setback, really, that, that we're, that we're losing, which gets back to the point Jim made earlier, which is that we have an interest in preventing that because we want, we want there to be able to be access for, you know, emergency services for, for repairs and, and so.
Yeah, well, we have row houses in town. I mean, there's, some of these garages are attached. That's where it's just, you know, and, and the twins are attached and so on. We should not be doing anything that goes against, you know, building life safety codes. But property owners are responsible for the maintenance of their structures. I also, I don't want to muddy it even further, but when we're talking about ADUs, I read the model ordinance. And one thing that I saw that was sort of interesting is they, when they were defining them, one of the categories that was in here is called junior accessory dwelling unit. And that is an ADU that doesn't have maybe sanitary facilities. It's basically just your bedroom or your, you know, you, you know, so that could be, that's often probably for a member of your family perhaps who, you know, sleeps there, but, but they, but they may come into the house to use the, the lavatories. And so I just, you know, I'm just pointing out that this whole thing is supposed to be kind of about flexibility for the property owner and the residents of the property to, to get value out of the outbuildings, you know, and complete, and, you know, so.
Just following along with, with the model ordinance, were you talking about the AARP model or?
That's correct.
How do they close that? Yeah, I, I think there's, there's also some EPA recommended language there too. But yeah, I was just looking at that section too, like basically permitted non-conforming structures should be allowed to change their use from a non-habitable use to habitable use without a conditional use for a special exception. And there's more on, the state of Oregon having legislation that's consistent with that. They made the point that it could be more viable to reconstruct or reuse a non-conforming structure and could be cheaper, but I'm hearing, you know, that may not be the case.
Well, I'm sure in some cases it's not.
Yeah.
But in some cases, as Jim is saying, in a recently built building, it could be less expensive.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we were, if we were a community of post-war housing, that may very well be true. But we're not and, and the, the construction that we're dealing with is, is kind of far below what would have built, been built, you know, 50, 60 years ago.
But if someone who wants to rebuild their garage for habitable use has to meet all the codes and is willing to accept the burden of the cost, why should we care?
Well, I, I think, again, you know, my, probably my issue, or maybe I'm reacting to recent events where I feel like the system was really gamed and we ended up with something that, that, you know, may technically have been a renovation, but, but really wasn't.
Yeah, but they.
You know, and I don't want, I don't want us to fall into something where we're finding out that, you know, the system could be gamed because we haven't thought this through enough.
But for one thing, there's another portion of our recommendations where there's a maximum size for habitable space. So whether you are building something new or repurposing something, there's a maximum size. So I'm not sure what the gaming is. The gaming is that you are allowed to build within setback area. As far as I can tell, that's the only difference. Whereas if you were building new, you wouldn't be.
And maybe that would do it. I haven't kind of gamed it myself with, you know, to, to figure it out. Usually how I figure out how you can game these things. And I haven't done that. Maybe that would do it.
I think, I think personally, I suspect we're going to struggle, if you were to get eight to 800 square feet, actually won't be that easy for a lot, in a lot of cases. It's, it's a bigger, it's pretty big, unless you can go to two full stories. Even then, it's pretty big. So I think if you, if you're, you know, I think in reality, a lot of this is going to, there may not be that many opportunities. And that's why, so the, the model ordinance really stresses to keep it flexible. You have the, the outlines of the rules, right? You know, you follow the zoning setbacks that are in place unless you have an existing building and then you can adapt to fully reuse it, right? You have a maximum of 800 square feet, or in the case of Burlington, Vermont, it's 800 or 30% of the house, the primary structure, whichever's greater. In Arbour, it probably usually is going to be 800 square feet. But if you have a really big house, you know, you can have a really big cottage. The, the, they, they talk a lot about, you know, it could even be inside the house versus, you know, not a, a freestanding structure and so on. But the, you know, the whole point is to make it so that the property owner can, can do it and, and use it, right? So.
Well, then, I mean, then the other thing, I'll, I'll posit then is, is, I mean, the other, a few minutes ago I said, well, would it just be cleaner to agree that this wouldn't be allowed? But it sounds like, you know, it's another way to, the opposite thing to ask is would it be simpler simply to say it should be allowed? But, you know, again, we have other provisions in there, meeting life safety codes, maximum size, maximum height. That will provide kind of brakes on anyone trying to use a non-conforming building to build something bigger than we would otherwise want.
I thought the Swarthmore code was interesting.
What, what, can you refer to what you thought was interesting?
Well, we have, they, and I have to admit, I'm a little confused because the example that was in it didn't seem to comply with what the code said. But they were talking about two rooms, a maximum of two rooms, attached to the existing structure, which again, I didn't understand. I gotta believe Swarthmore has a lot of garages too. And a, I forget the, the term they use for kitchen, but a kitchen without, you know, appliances essentially.
Without stove.
Yeah, without a stove, but yeah.
Well, about Swarthmore, let me say something. What you need, what we would need to understand is what the rest of the code says. Because in Norbert, even a detached house can have two units in it. And so by default, a detached house can already have an ADU in it. So we don't need to bother ourselves with that. So Swarthmore might have those requirements because they have single-family houses, which can only have one dwelling. So I think in actuality, we, we already have it covered in terms of incorporating an ADU into an existing house because our code allows for an existing house to have two dwellings within it. So we have to understand why Swarthmore.
I was intrigued by the number of rooms and, and talking about the kitchen, which.
But we don't, see, there's where we have a lot of flexibility. You can take your house and make it in two units. You can take your house and make it in a housing unit. You can add bathrooms and bedrooms, kitchens, whatever you want, however you'd like to do it.
Yeah, especially if you're, if you don't want to formally divide it as a separate.
I would invite that. Yeah, if it's in your house, we pretty much allow for many hours. It's mostly this.
And that was, was the gist of the Swarthmore.
Yeah. It feels like, if I had to like take a straw poll, who, who is, who is sort of leaning more towards the position that we should allow non-conforming structures to be converted, given that they will need to require life safety codes and maximum heights and, and, and areas and all the other?
Well, I think stop, stop before maximum height. Because if it's an existing structure, let's go with Jim's point. There's some existing structures that are taller than maximum. And I don't think they should be restricted.
I think that's, yeah, I think it's not a single question you're asking. I think we're going to sort through those non-conformities and say, these non-conformities are okay and these we're gonna, you know, we're gonna say over.
Fair enough. Let's set that one aside. I've only heard two, height and setback.
Height was the only thing I could think of, but you know, there's.
Height and the area.
Height.
And I guess, you know, the second floor too, you know, I mean, they're existing.
But we've, we've suggested that an ADU could have a second floor, even though right now accessory building is only at one floor. We've already discussed that an ADU could have two floors, but it would still have a, a maximum height of 16 feet, which we discussed would be allowable if it had a pitch.
That's for new construction.
Right, right, right.
What about lot, what about lot layers?
Oh wait, let's set that, we talked about that.
Yeah, we talked about that too, yeah.
So we can, so let's not, let's get to that in a minute. We can tell you what we came up with.
We know the zone.
Would I like to, I just sort of like to focus on the question, if we had to do a straw poll, who would be in favor of allowing for non-conforming accessory buildings that are non-conforming in terms of their setbacks from side or rear yards, assuming life safety codes are met and we have maximum habitable space and heights and so, who generally isn't supportive of that?
I'd be in favor of that, yes.
Without?
With the side.
Sorry.
And let's just do setbacks.
That's what I said.
Just setbacks.
Just setbacks.
That are just non-conforming due to setback.
Do a setback. And I would say yes.
And I'd, I'd follow that. So we sort of five, five to two. So the sense, the greater sense is in that direction. And then what about the situation where the non-conformity is in regard to height? I'm going to add in that probably to make this work, we'd have to assume that we would not allow, well, as in the case of the setbacks where you can't make the non-conformity worse. In the case of height, you cannot make the non-conformity worse.
Right, right. I agree with that.
Yeah, so who?
It's within the existing envelope.
Right. For, for building that is non-conforming in terms of height, it would have to not exceed the height of the.
It would have to be within the existing envelope.
But let me, let me, within these, that's a different thing. So within the existing. And that's important because you don't want the floor plate to be expanded at that height, right? Okay, so the second question is, who would support allowing not, accessory buildings that are non-conforming in terms of height to be converted to ADUs as long as the conversion occurred within the existing envelope? All right. And then the third one is building area, right? So the situation there is a building is non-conforming in terms of its.
Setbacks and its height.
Building coverage.
Well, just the amount of floor area, the amount of square footage that's used. What's, it's hard to say because there's no.
It's proposed to be used for habitable space.
What kind of building would already have too much floor area?
I guess a building that.
A big garage.
Well, that exceeded building coverage limited on the lot. Right.
We probably have to, we have to, that's another situation. We're talking, right now we're saying an ADU would have a maximum of 800 square feet. So the question is if there's an existing accessory building that's bigger than 800 square feet.
Just on one floor.
Yeah, just huge.
Would you allow that to become a motel, I mean, an accessory dwelling?
Only if it was the rosebud.
Well, were we saying that the, the residential use should be limited to 800 within that?
I don't know. That's the question. Would you, would, if there's a building, an existing non-conforming building that's got more than 800 square feet of floor area, would you allow that to be converted to residential use? That's meaning yet not exceeding the amount of floor area that, that's already there.
Maybe by a special exception. I think it's got to be a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, why do you say it's 800 by right beyond that, you need?
It's a lot of confirmation.
Yeah, it'd like need to be reviewed for where it sits on the lot, how big the lot is.
Then you would have to develop the metric, which is special exception could or couldn't be there.
Yeah.
I tend to not like special exceptions because basically they're exclamation.
Couldn't you, couldn't you get around that, like first building you're building and then applying for ADU status?
No.
I don't hear me.
Uh, no, why not? I mean, if I'm going to build a, I'm going to build a utility building that's compliant in every way, but is, you know, 1,000 square foot footprint or whatever.
And then you say, oh, I think this is new.
And then I say, hey, this is, you know.
That's right. Is there really anywhere in town that has utility buildings this large?
It's probably a moot point.
Probably, but it could be done, you know.
So maybe the square footage we shouldn't be so.
It's like, it's like the Wayne Manor hiding somewhere. It's really well-trained.
Well, do we have an inventory of accessory dwelling in Norbert?
Well, we have.
I think we do, yeah.
Well, they're, you know, I haven't just looked at most of them, although from a distance, I can't, I can't speak to their square footage. I will say there's a limited number that I saw that probably come to this kind of square footage. You know, I, I'm hesitant to say. to say how many I think there are, but it's, it's not hundreds, that's for sure, you know.
But there are a number of lots that are big enough that could support a very large utility building now, that could be built first.
I know John Walker doesn't like this, but you could say.
Depends on what I mean by very large.
Yeah.
Very large in the Hamptons.
I said, even though, even though Jim, even though John Walker doesn't like this, you could say that if a bill, if an accessory building is larger than eight hundred feet and exists the time this ordinance is passed, then you could use it, but you can't build a new one that's bigger than using it. The way, how would you figure that out and enforce it? You just look to see what day the building permit is issued for destruction, right? If the building permit is issued after the day the ordinance, then you know, know what I'm saying?
So you couldn't build a shell and then try to fit it out?
Right, unless you build it before the ordinance is passed. So that would be the way to do that. But it sounds like that may not be such a significant situation.
So if there's an existing two-floor utility building that's sort of mildly habitable already.
So you wouldn't have eight hundred square feet of usable space in a two-floor utility building, because you can only have one floor.
But, well, yes, you don't.
Okay.
It's tricky.
I mean, to tell you the truth, the real compliance is issued by the ones that are, that are done without any permits. And again, I, I spent a lot of time trying to look at the back of properties, you can do a lot of stuff back there and nobody will ever know what's going on. You know, and I'm sure some of that's going on as we speak.
So I think to kind of move on, the sense is, is that we wouldn't lean towards flexibility, but there are, that we have to recognize there are some strong reservations about allowing nonconforming accessory buildings to be converted, even though most of us feel like we'd like to try to allow for that to happen, there is, there are some strong reservations about that, we can note the reasons for that which have been stated. I think all we can do is report to council, is that there's a majority opinion, but there's a strong, there are strong arguments on the other side that if it's made, that need to be considered, because I don't, I don't feel like we're going to come to a seven to nothing consensus tonight on this, and I want to see if there's anything else we can cover. One question was, should ADUs be permitted only on owner-occupied properties? And I'm curious, Mike, I'm going to put you on the spot, how does that actually work in practice in other municipalities where that is the rule? Before we discuss whether it's a good idea, how does it work?
You know, I, I assume that it's to, it falls upon the municipality to verify that and determine who is owning the house and verify their residency. I don't know exactly how they go about that, to be honest, and I do know that all the ordinances that I know of in the county do require owner-occupied housing, there may be some that I don't know that don't, but as far as I know, they.
So you have to register their ADU and then every so often there's.
They often are required to register, and I know some I've worked with are required to register so that the municipality can keep an inventory, and then they also require annual inspections, so that way, that annual inspection can be used to verify residency, occupancy, who's living there, et cetera.
Is an annual inspection typical in like a multifamily building, like an apartment building? Is that the thing where?
I think that's in at least some cases, yeah, I mean, you're not even, Kevin, Kevin, can you answer that question?
We don't do, we don't currently do any sort of annual inspections, I actually met with some of them today regarding annual inspections of commercial businesses and also rental properties, so we're getting there at some point, but we don't do that yet, so we wouldn't have any way to kind of verify that, so in the meantime, my guess is the borough would be leading toward some sort of signed affidavit to keep on record and use that as leverage if they didn't comply with that.
When you say we're getting there, is, do you think it's the desire of the borough to have inspections of rental properties?
Yeah, we literally just discussed it today, so that'll, that'll happen at some point.
So there could be an inspection and verification process, so let's take, I know everyone here has seen enforcement issues that are challenging to manage, so let's take that off, I, I'm just wanting to table, I'm just curious whether you think from, for any policy reasons, it's a good idea to limit ADUs only to owner-occupied properties, as occurs in every other municipality in Montgomery County.
Well, how many, yeah, I'm curious, how many municipalities are allowed?
I'm going to take a break for a sec if you guys.
I don't know the flat number, I mean, if I had to guess, sixty-two municipalities, I wouldn't be surprised if maybe a third, two.
Of that many?
Yeah, forty percent maybe, if I had to guess. I've, I've written ordinances for a few municipalities, and I know we're, we're often writing them with our community plan exception for communities in the county.
I mean, this whole thing started with the, you know, the elderly parents who wanted a little bit nearby, and I'm not sure why it should migrate beyond that, you know, and become essentially an income stream for somebody. I mean, I know the idea that's been made, you know, this helps people stay in their houses by giving them an income stream, but, you know, I'm, I'm much more sympathetic to the idea that it's, it's about, you know, being close to your elderly parent.
So, wait a minute, is the question that the main, either the main house or the accessory structure has to be occupied by the owner of the property?
Maybe.
It's not, nothing to do with the relationship between the people?
Correct.
Okay. This particular question is only about whether the owner is on, is living on the site.
Okay, I was, yeah, the Swarthmore, and I'm not using the Swarthmore code as the beat-all, end-all, but they define the scope of relationships that these ADUs are being occupied with, not necessarily a blood relation, but some, some significant connection with the owner of the property.
But I think the first question is whether we're allowing, whether it's limited to owner-occupied.
Yeah, it's not the same, it's a question, we can add that question, there are listed questions to ask, but the, the only question I'm trying to ask right now is to focus, think it's a good idea to limit the AD, ADUs only to properties that are occupied by the owner, whether it's the ADU or the principal, Adam, what's your thought?
I, I don't have a strong opinion, but I just will read from the model ordinance language, and obviously it's very pro-ADU, but it said, "There is a problem with the logic and fairness of applying an occupancy standard to ADUs if there is no such requirement for single-family homes generally. If single-family homes can be rented out by a non-resident owner, then what is the policy basis for requiring occupancy when there is an ADU on the property?" And that may be just about like whether it's two unrelated people, like the, versus the family member, but, you know, they're just driving it out again, it's like, you know, are you over-regulating the question or not? I personally think like it does provide some increased accountability perhaps to have the property only there, but I don't have a strong opinion, because again, the, the whole house could be rented out, so what's, it isn't that much different, so, anyway.
I agree.
I agree too, I agree, including not having a strong opinion.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I would just, I, I'm not sure how I feel, but I would wonder whether allowing, it's true, and it's an interesting point, that a house itself can be rented out, whether allowing a house to be rented out as well as an ADU by an absentee landlord is not just an issue of accountability, but also something which might tend to fuel displacement, because it becomes more attractive to have the house as investment properties that has residential properties.
Oh, I, I mean, I personally think it, the whole thing about displacement is we need to be adding more housing, but, again, like, to put it, let me frame it differently from, from the same way that they're bringing the issue up, on my street are several single-family, homes that were built as single-family homes, even if maybe they were intended to have rooms to let out or whatever, but those houses now have three, perhaps even four apartments in them, and is it any different to have a house and an ADU than to have three apartments in one house?
I agree. And as, you know, not to, again, repeat myself, as Airbnb gains traction more and more and more, why, why not rent the whole house and then see the utility shut in the back as an opportunity for just another bedroom? Yeah, like more, something more transient or temporary.
Well, that, that whole, that is a whole other issue.
Yeah, so it's just, you can't regulate.
We don't really allow for that in Norbert, and that's kind of what we're trying to talk about right now.
Can I just point out, although I still agree with Adam, I want to point out one way it is different, which is, I think we're talking about allowing ADUs on properties that wouldn't normally support a second or third rentable unit according to their lot size, so that's, this could be considered one way of getting around the lot restriction on number of legal residences on property.
Is that a bad thing?
No, I'm just pointing out one way that it's different from, you know, three or four apartments within a house versus three, two or three apartments in a house plus an additional ADU in the back, slightly different because, because of the calculation of how many units a lot by virtue of its area can support.
And how is parking, you know, coincide with all this?
Well, we've already discussed and agreed that not, I, I don't think it's a hundred percent consensus that, that ADUs should not have parking requirements.
Could you explain the law?
Because that's what people drive cars.
You know, we discussed this last month.
I wasn't here, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm going to relitigate it, because we discussed it.
Just explain it.
Like to make the law, Adam, would you like to make the argument as to why parking requirements, there should not be a parking requirement for an ADU?
I think, if I recall correctly, it's a discussion of, you know, what are the goals of the ordinance, right? So we're trying to produce an option for affordable units, right, and to make housing more affordable, and we're trying to not increase the, you know, not dramatically increase impervious coverage, right, on lots, so by reusing existing outbuildings is one example, we're not dramatically changing the, the impervious coverage, we're just using it more for housing instead of a shed or a garage, and so that, and, you know, fundamentally, we're not really altering probably the demand profile for parking significantly with this or this change, like, it's not going to really change the complexion of the town or the number of cars being parked, any more than having multiple living in a house, you know, they may have three or four cars, or they may have zero cars, or they may have one, like, it, you know, it varies now from house to house how many vehicles that people own, and so we don't want to go counter to affordability, we don't want to increase impervious coverage, so we just essentially leave it out of the, it's not a requirement that's changing.
I think it boils down to two issues, Jim, one is, a parking requirement is a barrier to create an ADU, which might run counter to our goals of creating more diverse housing choices in Norbert than allowing people to have additional income streams to support their ownership of the property. And secondly, second point that Adam was making is that the natural variance in the amount of parking demand in any block is probably much more up and down, and the addition of an ADU will result in, and the example I gave, the house I live in now, if you go there, you will see on Sunday it's five cars parked there for one house. Thank goodness it's Foxhaw Way and not Dudley, but if you'd gone there three years ago, you would have seen one car, and the only reason for that, the house hasn't changed, is the composition of the household has changed. Two people got, one person got a driver's license, one person came home from college, two people got partners. Otherwise, and, and you go there next year, there'll be three cars, or two, because other people are going to leave to go to college. So the natural up and down of, of demand for parking in any block is driven by a wide variety of things, and it didn't seem to us that the impact of having an accessory dwelling here and there was going to be that great compared to anything else that naturally happens.
Can I just quickly add that, I feel like lack of creation of off-street parking in Norbert is not our fault, I think we have the opposite problem. Of all the new construction in Norbert over the last five years, even where developer is not required to put any off-street parking in, the developer always puts two off-street parking spaces in the back, and I can, I mean, there are so many examples of that, including 102 Woodside, if we ever get around to reporting on that, they're not required to put in a single off-street parking space despite virtue of their street parking allowance, however, they're going to pave twenty-three or twenty-four percent of their lot just to get a driveway to the back where they have a two-car garage proposed, even though it's not required. So, you know, I feel like we have the opposite problem, we're not asking developers to put in off-street parking, but they're doing it anywhere, they're paving way more of the town than we want them to.
Which is another subject regarding.
Yeah, so those are the.
Okay, thank you.
So who's persuaded by the examples Adam gave, that, that really there should be no requirement in regard to ADUs only being owner-occupied properties, does that, does that make sense, given the, the context that the house could be rented out anyway, that the house could be subdivided and rented out anyway?
Yeah.
Is there anyone who feels strongly that ADUs should be permitted only on owner-occupied properties? So I think we can, so there's consensus that owner-occupied properties is not a requirement. I'd like to say that the last bullet point here during the time tonight, it's probably something we should revisit later, which is a different metric for managing the overall size of an ADU that's board-based rather than the maximum floor area. I'd like to say, I'd like to table that one, because it's late, two, because I don't think it's critical to the functioning of this proposal, since we've been using the eight hundred square foot maximum, whether it's seven fifty or eight or whatever, it seems to be pretty functional to us, and I'm, I'm not sure the outcome of this will be any better if we come up with a form, even though I brought the question up, I'm not persuaded that if we spend hours on it, a, a form-based answer will produce any better results, and given the wide variety of situations that we've encountered, I think kind of a form-based answer probably would create more complications, given that it's where, so I would suggest we just table that. What I'd like to do is summarize these findings, it's, we do have other, other infill proposals, which I think are too late to discuss at this point, unfortunately, but what I'd like is that you could review them, I think most of you could evolve in a conversation one way or the other about these, and I think the important thing would be to flag issues you still think need to be resolved. I'll just describe these briefly, so that, so that they help you look at these four, these three or four points. So first of all, what we do is we, we outline goals for why we are interested in thinking about infill housing, I think the first two bullets there are strong and solid, I think it's kind of tricky, although I think we do have the goal of bringing more houses into conformity with the code, that kind of makes the whole rest of this more complicated, so I'm not sure that's the strongest goal for this exercise. The suggestions we've made from a policy point of view are to create a new housing type, a cottage, which would have a maximum size, maximum height, and which would be, which could be built on a smaller lot. If you remember, the minimum size lot for new construction in most of Norbert is either six thousand or ten thousand square feet, and so this is a house that could be built on a smaller lot, so we could allow for smaller lots, a cottage. The second idea is to extent allow the use of row houses, which are now only allowed in the four. which are now only allowed in the 4, 4B district, 4A district, to be allowed in other districts as infill housing. Again, this applies only to properties in historic districts that have large lots that can be subdivided um, as a way of allowing those homeowners to have recognized value in their property. So there's a few suggestions as to how the row house housing type could be amended to allow for infill. Then there's a description of, of site planning rules to allow for subdivision into smaller lots than we allow now. Quite frankly, if we kind of looked at Norbert objectively, we might even say our zoning is kind of exclusionary because of large lot sizes that we require compared to the lot sizes we have. So this would allow for subdivision into smaller lots. The next section is about allowing multiple, multiple structures on one lot, sort of a condominium approach. How would we manage that? As a way of providing an alternative to subdivision that would allow for more efficient use of land space? So subdivision can be a pretty inefficient way of using the area of a lot. So this might allow for more tailored solutions to each lot. And then finally, I added, as a result of the last conversation that Adam and Jim and I had, special considerations for through-block lots, which occur only in a few places. Essentially, these are considerations for how do you determine what the front, primary frontage is, how do you then deal with the rear in terms of site plan setback, things like that. I actually think this is a small number, it's not exactly E equals mc squared, but it's a relatively small number of rules that allow for a lot of things to happen. I think it's a very minimalist set of provisions. And, and so take a look at it and let me know what comments, concerns you have so we can kind of efficiently go through them the next time we meet. And.
So you won't be submitting these to council yet?
Well, I don't, I mean, I'd be happy to submit them. The councils are working back to it and get their feedback, but I don't, unless you all wanna talk about it more, I don't know that I can say these represent a full consensus.
Right.
I could say this is what we have on the table that we're talking about, if you're comfortable with that. At least doing that without saying we believe that these are the recommendations we'd like to make. But we, we'd nevertheless like your input at this point. I'd be happy to do that. I mean, for time effectiveness, that might be a great way to go if you don't have a concern about that.
Just make sure it's clear that it's on the document.
Can I just make a real quick suggestion regarding the goals? And you already sort of said it, that the first, the first two should really be combined at this point. Because it's the same, in other words.
Okay.
But developing infill housing while providing a path for the dollar is small.
Affordable.
It's a one second, it could be a one second.
Okay. Am I making one second?
That's the only thing.
But if you're comfortable with me saying like, this is what we're talking about right now, this is not necessarily.
Oh, yeah, no, it's great.
Anybody consensus, but we think these ideas are ready for your feedback before we formalize it.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to do that.
No, I think it's pretty good.
Um, we've been having weekly meetings. The first three people who are available, we talk about it. I'm happy to keep workshopping these over the next month or so if I. Okay, so I did in my, so I'll call that, I am the close. I did in my chair's report, forget Ellen, Jim, Spear, do I ask to report on the upcoming zoning hearing board hearing?
It's really more straightforward than I think.
Okay, well, we like to have a zoning hearing board standing, so we can brief.
So this is in regards to 102 Elmwood, which is an existing house that has to be torn down due to structural, it, it can't stand anymore, you know, it has structural issues. And even, even if it were under the historic preservation ordinance, it, in my opinion, it would still be eligible, would be torn down because of its structural issues. They're proposing replacing it with a house considerably larger footprint, but still compliant. The only thing they're taking the zoning hearing board is for a special exception for a side-facing garage, which is two-car garage and the, as I was saying earlier, very rear of the house, a very long driveway. Driveway is compliant, apparently. It's only the question of the side-facing garage, which they need to go to zoning hearing board to get a special exception, showing they've met the conditions, which are 20 feet from the side property and at least 10 feet from the front property.
So that's it?
That's, that's it. They're covering right up to the limit of their impervious coverage with all kinds of stuff, but.
Sixty percent.
Just sure sixty percent.
That's the ratio, sixty percent?
That's what they get.
To me, that's crazy. I'm.
We, we might not have a problem with our code where a lot of our older properties are built that way.
Yeah.
And we, we don't want, and those tend to be smaller properties, right? But we don't want, unfortunately, we, we've translated that into new construction and larger properties. I feel like we need to revisit that one day. It might need more differentiation.
Basically based on lot size or something?
This lot is, it's larger, it's a 6,400 square foot lot. They are proposing covering 2,260 with a house footprint. That's thirty-five percent of the lot, which you're allowed.
Well, part of that is the two-car garage, right?
Part, yes.
Yeah.
Correct. But not the driveway. The driveway on its own is 23.8% of the lot coverage.
That's insane.
Is that in the footprint?
That's no way.
No, it's not. It's opposite the station.
It's across the street from me, like, K, K4.
That's unreal.
Oh, what, what's that?
102.
Oh, oh, I, I was thinking of what, two or four.
It's a problem. For years, it's had a.
No, 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 I'm. I was confusing with the other property that's down at the other end, that's, got shit.
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
All right. Is there any other business? Oh, sorry, public comment. There's no one here, but I believe, is there anyone left in the meeting? I don't believe there's anyone left in the meeting. So we have no public comment. All right, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Push to adjourn.
Okay. Crashed in the cyber space. Okay, I'll pay for adjourned. Thank you all. Thank you all. Appreciate, appreciate your efforts to believe in us. So Michelle Carroll, thank you for joining us. Can you return this call?